Okay, it's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule call. Lee Sharp?
Here.
Casey Barney?
Here.
Carol Ramos?
Here.
Fran Newton? Here. Before we get started, yet again, I'd like to just take a minute of silence to remember the tragedy that happened last week in Parkland, Florida. I wish we didn't have to keep doing this, so if we could just take a minute. Okay, thank you. Before we start the regular meeting, we have two public hearings, so I'd like to call a meeting to order for petition Article 25, which is to rescind RSA 40:13, the SB2. Charlie, would you like to lead us in the discussion?
These were petition articles that we received. We've already discussed these as a deliberative. Counsel recommended to me that we should still have the public hearing per the RSA. So this is just basically a formality and gives the public another opportunity to speak on these articles.
Does the board have any comments they'd like to make?
No, I think we voted already.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone have a comment? Yes, Kathleen?
Well, I find it problematic that this is a petition Warren article and no one running is top for the town moderator position. It's gonna be pretty odd to have a town meeting. It takes a little more, I shouldn't say effort, but it's a little more involved than SB2 meeting and a very strong moderator to keep the meeting moving forward and within the time parameters necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Joe?
Yeah, what's the difference between the two? I mean, is that if we go away with SB2, it's like a Texas roadhouse?
No, it's like a regular town meeting. So rather than having the election to vote on all the Warren articles, it would all be done on one day. Apparently, it's the way Ashland used to operate years ago. The advantage is you get the decisions made there after all the discussion. The disadvantages are that, you know, we don't get a lot of turnout, and so decisions can be made by a small number of people. You know, I mean, you can make an argument for either case, but given the turnout we've had at our meetings, it gets to be difficult.
It's a town meeting type, you know, the old-fashioned town meeting when everybody used to get together and the ladies would knit in the front and everybody, really?
Yeah.
And you'd go through each of the issues and everybody would talk about it, but they could change it, they could change the bottom line of things, but they still would vote for their candidates. They don't do that that way. They still do that by ballot. So the way we're doing it now is we have a deliberative, which is kind of like a town meeting, where you change things, but then that's it. Then you go and vote for everything.
Then that goes to the ballot, yeah.
All these go to the ballot. But at a town meeting, they don't go to the ballot.
Right, so in the town meeting, then certain items are settled at that point, and then just elections are for actual ballot.
That's correct. Lee, were you in town when they used to do a town meeting? Were you part of that?
I was.
And how did it work? Just curious.
There were only a couple fights. We had to go out. It was, I would probably say that we did have a few more people, but not, we've never been, you know, had a really good turnout for either one.
Yeah. When did we change to the SB2?
1999, it says on the, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That sounds right.
Yes.
I'd also like to say, and Kathleen's comment, originally, it wasn't a petition Warren article.
Right.
So.
I didn't say petition.
It became a petition.
It's something about being problematic that it's petition.
No, it's problematic that we don't have somebody running for a moderator.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was.
Yeah, she did say that. That's, I knew what she meant, but she didn't say that.
Yeah, just checking.
Yeah, it was a regular Warren article, but we have to put the petition articles in, and so it didn't make sense to have it twice, so that's why we took it out.
Right, I just wanted to clarify, so I didn't know she.
Any other comments? Hearing none? Oh, sorry, Kathleen?
Now, times have changed. You know, I lived in New Durham for 15 years, and the last two years I lived there, we had switched over to the SB2. And like I said, you really need a very strong moderator, because the meetings have to move along at a clip. The last one they had, they could not finish it in the evening, so you had to come back the next day, the next evening. And the amount of people that showed up for the next evening was not good.
Yeah.
And they were the ones that got to decide, to cast the votes, for everything that's gonna happen in the following year. And I think a lot of the younger generation aren't used to that, haven't experienced it. It is nostalgic in a way. You know, like Lee said, you have the ladies knitting, you have the bake sales. It was a way for people to get together, but with the explosion of, you know, social media, electronic devices, people can have access to this information if they choose, that they don't have to go to the town meeting in order to participate and learn this information. Personally, I like the privacy of a voting booth. I was not comfortable raising my hand, because there are certain groups of people that would take notes and write down who voted on what, you could hear the whisperings, and it can be intimidating at times, that makes you uncomfortable that people are watching you and writing down, you know, how you're voting. So people can participate, that's a choice, and no matter what we choose, we still need to have people come and participate.
Sure. Thank you. Oh, we, I'm sorry, we voted to not support it, yes?
No, I did.
Oh, you did, yeah. I did not. Okay, sorry.
So, wait, it was 3 to 1?
It was 3 to 1.
Yep.
And you voted for it, and the rest was against?
No, I voted to keep SB2.
You voted to keep SB2?
Right, yes, that's right.
Yeah, you recommended against it, and we, the rest of us were for it.
Right.
Okay.
For putting it on the.
For putting it on the ballot, but when it came to whether or not we supported it, I think that.
Well, we haven't decided that.
No, we haven't decided. Okay, yes, Pat?
So those who vote absentee ballot wouldn't have an opportunity to vote on these issues?
That's correct.
No.
That's correct. You'd have an opportunity to only vote on the candidates, I believe, but not on the issues. Yeah. Anything else? Going once, going twice? Okay, seeing or hearing no other comments, I will close this public hearing. And now, I would officially like to open a public hearing on petition Article 26 to adopt RSA 40:14-B, delegation of default budget to budget committee. Is there anything, any further explanation?
Same, we're required to have a public hearing per RSA.
Yeah. I was on the budget committee for a few years, and when I was on the budget committee, we did the default budget, but we didn't, we weren't supposed to, because it had been voted to have the budget committee do it, but it was supposed to be a two-thirds vote, and it wasn't two-thirds, so then it reverted back to the select board, and we've been doing it, I think, ever since I've been on the select board. So I will open it up for comments. Yes?
Why shouldn't it go to the budget committee?
Well, it's an opinion. You know, my opinion is that the town spends its, the select board spends its days working directly with the department heads. We know all the ins and outs of what's going on in the town, and we feel that we have a better handle on the needs of the town.
That's why it's here.
That's why it's here.
So you can vote.
Yeah. So, but, you know, again, it's a matter of opinion. Some people think.
Because they review the proposed budget, right?
Yes, they do. The budget committee, the way it's done is the department heads suggest a budget, the select board then reviews the department head's requests, we make changes that we think are appropriate, and then, once we come up with a budget, the whole thing gets passed to the budget committee. Then they can do what they want to with it, and the budget that's presented to the town is their budget. But we have, then we've also done the default budget. And the default budget is basically, the rules are that it was the budget for the previous year minus, except for contractual obligations, or things where you know it was a one-time expense and you're not gonna need it anymore, and that's why, you know, we have, I think we have a direct handle on that. But, you know, it's a matter of perception, so.
One thing that I notice, being a liaison from the board select to the budget committee, there are certain things that we, as members of the budget committee, aren't privy to information. For instance, they would be responsible for not just the town budget, they'd be responsible for five budgets. They'd have to do water, they'd have to do sewer, they'd have to do electric, they'd have to do the town, and they'd have to do the school. By RSA, the only ones that have to report to them are the towns. So they could be leaving themselves blindly into default budgets for four departments to rely upon those monies to operate their daily activities. That's the only problem I see with it, because there's, the way that the RSA is set up, we have three individual groups that are not under the governance of the select board, being water, sewer, and of course, the school.
And electric.
Well, yeah, well, sorry, four, and electric. So they do not have to turn that information over to us, so we can't give a educated, or I'd say educated guess, you know, because they've never before had to give that information over. So some of it may not even exist, you know, outside of their realm of configurations. It's not like when we get our paperwork expenditures, up until, what was it, four months ago, we've never got any paperwork for expenditures or anticipated income for any of them. So we have no history to go back on. So yes, it's good to have the ability to have the freedom to have everything, you know, under one roof, I'd say, would be the term I'd use, but then again, you know, the learning curve is gonna be very steep if it did go to that.
So when they look at the operating budget, they don't look at those things?
They occasionally do, and will occasionally ask questions, but their job is really to review each line in the operating budget and decide if it's reasonable, if it should be cut. They'll look at past expenditures, past years, and kind of get their, make their judgments that way. Yes, Kathleen?
And, once again, a problem, people are not running for this position.
Exactly.
So it's making it a more burdensome job to a few people.
Yeah, the budget committee is vastly understaffed. You know, there's a lot of, like you said, a lot of empty slots. It's hard to fill. Yes?
I just wanted to get some clarification of what Harold was saying. Are you saying that those heads are not reporting to the budget committee, or they're not reporting information to the budget committee and the select board?
Budget committee and the select board. Under RSA, they're operated by commissioners, which we have no governance over. When we went from a town manager to a town administrator, we established the electric department commissioners and the water and sewer commissioners. So they have all of their daily operations under their roof. We have nothing to do with their daily operations. The only interaction, really, is the electric department for the inflow of taxes for the streetlight. That's the only interaction the town has with those three departments.
Now, they still go to the budget committee and present their budgets, and the budget committee will have jurisdiction over their operating budget, but, you know, right now, not the default. Yes, Marty?
And I think, just to clarify for the cameras on, in the past, when the budget committee did do the default budget, they did only the town.
Yes, that's correct.
The utility commissions and the school did their own default budgets.
Yeah.
But if this were to pass, they would automatically send all of those budgets to the budget committee to create the default budget.
Right.
Which they have not had to do before.
Right, right.
You'd be looking.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
You'd be looking at going from a two-and-a-half-hour meeting to perhaps a six-hour meeting. And David can attest that we have some long meetings sometimes.
Yes. Yes, Wendy?
I need some names for the minutes. What is her name? Ginger Grant?
Michael Vogel.
David, do you have any words of wisdom? I mean, you've been on the budget committee like forever.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, yes, it is.
And I'm not sure that the budget committee would do it any better than the select committee.
Thank you.
But it wouldn't be taking it away from the selectmen. It would just be giving the second set of eyes.
Yeah, it would. For the default, it would. We would have no input.
Oh, I thought it would be the same process where it went to you and the budget committee like it does now.
No, they would have full responsibility. All we would do is the operating budget, and again, it would be our suggestions. We still, then we don't have control over that once it gets to the budget committee either. Any other comments, questions?
One in the back.
Yes, Kathleen, sorry.
If I remember correctly, what was it, three, if not four, years ago, when there was the discussion who was in control of the default budget, that the budget committee was more than happy to throw it back at the select board.
Indeed, indeed, we were. Indeed, we were. It was never a fun job.
And some of those people are still serving on the budget committee, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing on petition Article 26, and I thank you for your participation. Public comments about the agenda, anything? Okay. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from February 5. Are there any comments, corrections? Yes, Lee? No, thank you, we appreciate it.
Page 2, Wendy, line 11, TA Smith, inform the board, blah, blah, land trust, L, capital L.
Oh, right.
Actually, wait a minute. It's, it should be.
A title.
LA CLT, Conny Area Community Land Trust.
That's right.
Which actually, they just, at the time, they just actually changed their name recently. But that LA CLT will work. And the same for line 12.
Okay.
They'll write it out, so people know what it stands for.
Yeah, Conny Area.
What do you mean by line 12?
Right below, it says, the town. It shouldn't say the town, it's actually the land trust.
The land trust, yeah. The town didn't apply, we just had to sign off on the grant application.
Yeah, and CDBG, I think, should be written out, too.
Yeah. Community Development Block Grant.
Same page, line 26, after assess the town's total energy needs, add net metering was also discussed. So in the future, when discussions come up about solar, you can see that this board discussed net metering.
Good.
Page, page three, Suckman Sharp's presented at the top, planning board update. We didn't work, it says, which included working on, we didn't work on it. That was discussed. A voluntary merger to confirm property lines and then cross out in order to donate acreage. It should say instead, property lines for a land donation to the State Conservation Society.
So cross out working and put discussion?
Yes.
And then state before Conservation Society?
Yeah, cross out order to donate acreage to the, but for a land donation to the State Conservation Society. Because we were just presented it, we didn't, we didn't do the word. And then there's one more. Line 10, nine citizen inquiries. After, it says, to the next select board meeting to work session, we should also add, and I wrote it, so you don't have to write it down. It was also noted, the board will not read people's opinions nor give meeting announcements unless they're the towns at public meetings.
Thank you, Lee. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a couple. On page two, number five, he announced, I think it should be clarified to see TA Smith.
Yeah.
And the same thing on line nine, it should say TA Smith, just so there's clarity, because if you read it, it looks like it's DPW director.
Yep. Anything else, Charlie? Anything else? Harold or Casey?
No.
Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January, February 5 as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second to the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda. So for the weeks of February 5, accounts payable in the amount of $193,983 and the payroll manifest of $21,416. The week of February 12, payroll manifest of $18,572. And I think we've all signed them, but Lee, I don't know.
I did.
Okay, so get those back to Wendy. Okay, department heads. Fire chief, Steve, would you like to?
Sure. You have, before you went, Lee, two requests. One being that, in following procedure, that since I'm in chief anyway, all officers, department officers, company level, and chief officers are deputy wardens, forestry deputy wardens. And I am required to submit an application to the State Department of Forestry, submitting the candidate, and that form needs to be signed by chairperson of the board and at least two other board members before I can send it in.
Okay. Do we need to approve this appointment, Steve, or just?
I, I don't, I, well, I guess by signing.
Okay. A motion to approve Kendall B. Hughes to the appointment as deputy fire warden?
I'll do that.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Is there a term?
Pardon?
Is there a term?
I believe it's a two-year term. However, that's automatically renewable if they follow their training requirements. And usually, when, if, say, a lieutenant or any officer was finished with that position, that would possibly relinquish that role as well.
Steve, what does the deputy warden do? What are the requirements?
Basically, what they're for is, he is going to have, like our other deputy wards, has the authority to issue fire permits. And in the past, people at town hall, they tell you, they get a lot of phone calls, people wanting permits, and they have a hard time connecting to somebody that can issue them. So we, that's when we went to using our lieutenants and captains and deputy fire chief and myself to issue fire permits. Also, well, actually, a former Department of Public Works director was not an officer, however, I authorized him to issue fire permits, because he was around during the day.
Right.
Our current public works director is also lieutenant in the department, so he already has that authority. And they can also issue warnings. And they're also authorized to issue warnings to reviolence.
Thank you. All those in favor of appointing Kendall B. Hughes to the position of deputy forest fire warden, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay. Sign this?
Part two. As you recall, last fall, we were, we received a grant from Homeland Security to purchase ballistic equipment for our EMS personnel for operations in an active shooter event. And I got the, the grant is approved, and I've gotten the list of items that I think you also have, that you sent out, you have quotes on. That has been approved by the state as well, and what I'm asking for is permission to move forward with the purchase of this equipment. As you know, it's a reimbursable grant, in other words, we get reimbursed for what we spend on it, up to $6,000. I noticed that that line is in the default budget, so I'm thinking that it would be okay to move ahead with that now. All of our personnel who will be participating in that have already done the online component training for EMS and warm zone operations, and we're ready for the practical. And I've been told that it would make sense for us to have the equipment before we did the practical training and could not give any exercises. So I guess I'd like to move forward with that.
Sure. So what kind of equipment, Steve?
Ballistic vests and helmets and medical equipment associated with hemorrhage control.
Anything we need.
And here's hoping we never need it, but absolutely.
We support.
It'd be wonderful if we did. And I imagine, when I started in the fire service a few years ago, that we would reach a day where we were doing this. I never in my wildest dreams imagined.
No, it's a very sad commentary.
I have a question for you. Third line down, plate carrier and plate to fully attachment points. Is that a level four or greater? Did they give you a level on that?
Yeah, that's, the plates are gonna be ceramic plates, which are for rifle rounds.
Okay, okay. I just ask, because you don't have your 20-foot, two-second mill when you're working that close to somebody, and four is only good, you know, it doesn't do anything for a knife. Thank you.
Okay, a motion to approve the purchase of equipment with the Homeland Security grant?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, Steve, thank you. Old business, town administrator updates.
It's our February town administrator update. I will, I'll go through these. Feel free to ask any questions that you might have. I'll try not to read it verbatim, because I know some people at home don't, probably don't have copies. Fire department had, in the month of January, had 34 calls, 16 medical emergencies, 11 fire rescue calls, five motor vehicle accident, and two service calls. They continued to do train-in. Some of the train-in include review of hydrant operations, target hazard locations, on scene reports, EMS train-in. Life safety cold inspections were completed. They also sent reports to the state fire marshal's office, and they also had quality assurance reviews of all TEMSIS reports, but maybe Steve can tell me what that means?
TEM system, that's the medical report form.
Okay, yeah. I didn't know that. Well, I don't think anyone else did, we all know, right?
I know, I didn't know.
All right. So the library had 470 people visit the library in January. They offered five programs that were attended by 28 people last month. They circulated 683 items in January. Glad to see that people are using the library. The library is pleased to offer a word-winning Muzzy Language program for children that's sponsored by Friends of the Library. Martine, could you expand on that? What's Muzzy Language program for children?
It's an online foreign-language instruction program, but I believe is a bit, has different levels in it. It is available for children, and they, anybody with their library card can access it online with their HCP.
Cool.
Great, that's very nice.
So winter vacations next week, the library, anyone wants to stop by and play some games? They have games and puzzles going on. Book discussions coming up at the, on Monday of every month. They're reading a book called Tests of the Durbavilles by Tom Hardy.
Blind.
Is it?
No editorial con.
You can get a copy at the library.
Or Cliff No.
Yep. Town clerk, tax collector, as with all of us that were preparing the audit, she closed out the books for 2017 and prepared for town meeting. We collected $60,374 in taxes, $30,216 in motor vehicle permits, $250 for vital records and registered 20 dogs. As a reminder, seems like we just did this yesterday, the dog licenses are expiring April 30. In Get Out and Vote, town elections are March 13, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The Warren articles are at the town office and on the website. Parks and Rec continues to do well with their after-school program. The director continues to go to Manchester to pick up snacks for the food bank for our program. They're filling up with the campers, and, once again, once we announced this last time about the vacation slots open for kids that might need a place to go. DPW, after a little bit of a rough month, would you say? Two storms, two storms, two trucks down, one got in an accident, hoping to get those back on the road pretty soon. They actually had to use some plow, regular pickup trucks to do the roads, which caused some delays in clearing the roads. But DPW and all of us would probably like to send the thanks to water and sewer for helping us out with the vehicles, and especially the town of New Hampton also helped us out.
Yeah, that's quite a nice plow. Couldn't we keep that one, the one you got from New Hampton?
Oh, we didn't get it. They just, they never.
Well, I saw one come up my hill that.
That's ours. We just put, we put the, one of the truckets down, we put that plow in the pickup.
No, no, I mean, it said the town of New Hampton in it, on the big vehicle.
Uh, no, didn't.
No? Didn't? Okay.
They never got the truck ready for us.
I guess I was.
It was a ghost truck.
I've never seen it on my road before, so, but, yeah, very definitely thanks to the people who helped.
We can end on good news with DPW. They purchased this loading chute for snow, loading chute for the snow blower, and they added wooden sides to their one-ton truck. So basically, they can haul more snow.
Good.
It's quicker, and they saved $3,000, so we don't have to contract it now.
Wonderful, excellent. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, I'll keep going, I got more stuff.
Well, go, keep going.
So now, our project list.
Our, oh, yeah, project list, yeah, okay.
The TAP grant continues to move on. The surveyor was scheduled to have, the surveyor start February 7. I don't know if that completely happened or not, but I I don't know if that completely happened or not, but I did ask if they can do it in the snow, and they said that they can.
Okay.
So, we'll see. The Thompson Street, no update, we'll just wait for the vote. I hope I didn't, a general comment, I hope I didn't confuse the board and people at the deliberative about that when I was talking about the finance. My ultimate comment was to try to express to the public was, yes, it's $1.7 million for the project, but the appropriation would be, we hope to get it to $17,000 a year. I know I went through a lot there and was worried I might have lost some people, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a big ticket item, but paying it at that rate is, you know, is pretty good, and getting this SRF loan is just, we'll never get money any cheaper, so here's something, yeah.
The Packard Mill site, we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yes, and we do need to schedule a joint meeting with the Economic Development Committee. So, there's a meeting of economic development next Tuesday, so I can, can talk to them about setting a joint meeting as soon as possible so that we can get these legal questions ironed out before we, you know, present it to the public. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Town building, town communications. So we're, basically, we're running off fiber now at the building. CCS made the switch.
Have you noticed better service?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, yeah.
A little bit, just a little bit.
Well, it was really on the cloud, and I'm not too, too much on the cloud, as much as maybe Wendy. The phones certainly don't drop anymore. I mean, that was definitely an issue with the phones.
Has it improved service for the police department as well?
Tony's nodding his head in there, yep.
Yep, okay, good.
So, yep. All right, town building maintenance. I've had a couple of things go on since the last time we spoke. Had a walkthrough with a company to replace the carpet and the tile in the building. I'm hoping joint loss committee doesn't come back and say something about the carpet that's ripping, and it's pretty much a liability for some parts.
Where is it ripping?
Up in the PD.
Oh, in the PD, yeah.
It's completely up, it's right bare to the floor.
Yeah.
Probably the first thing that's going to get changed, and needs to get changed.
Yeah.
So, I reached out to a same company that did the carpet replacement on the second floor, where you replaced the asbestos and stuff, or got rid of the asbestos, so.
Okay.
What's that?
Where we covered that.
Well, no, he got it removed. We filed a report, yeah, yeah. Had a walkthrough with a mason to repair the old jail, and waited to hear back from them on how much that might cost. We already received a check from the insurance company, so we're good to go there.
How much?
From the insurance company, I think it was $3,000. It gives, yeah, I think they gave us four, but they take $1,000 off of the deductible.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, but if it's not enough, they told me it's not enough, we just go back and let them know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at it yesterday, and it was on a tour of the buildings, and it looked worse than I thought.
It is.
The snow's melted, that's why.
Yeah.
No, that whole window is probably going to have to come out.
Yeah, it's structural.
Okay.
And he said he had routed a little bit of the other areas, I mean, which we, we knew about, you know, when Craig claimed it earlier in the year.
Yeah.
Honestly, I'm not too surprised that it kind of went.
Yeah.
You know, it's easy it did.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
Now, if any of the bricks need to be replaced, do we have any historical?
He did, he said, he said that, yep. The mason said that, yep. He's probably got some old bricks lying around that he could replace.
Good.
Yep, so. I had a call with Mango Security this week. We're going to, me and Tony are going to meet with them on Friday about installing cameras. So, next time if something happens like this, we'll know.
Yeah.
Send it built into.
Yep. And also the next step with the Phase Two, I call it, of the fire alarm systems. We had a meeting, me, the TC, DPW, and police chief about overview of the personnel policy. So, just a general overview meeting, and we'll see where it goes.
Are you going to be meeting on a semi-regular basis to do updates this year?
Yep, yep, yep. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. GIS depends on the vote, and, okay, thank you, Charlie.
Sure.
Ashland, Fourth of July committee budget, do we have anybody here from them?
No.
We just, okay.
They asked, they did ask for a status about the board approval.
Okay.
This was tabled.
Yeah.
So ago.
I had one question. You know, it looked pretty good. Looks like they've done a thorough job. I just have one question, and that was a meaning of the line. If you can find it here. Man, I should have highlighted it. Oh, on the second page, close to the bottom, just before total expenses, it says, "Unanticipated expenses, town budget, the amount of $1,100." Do, does anyone know what that is, what that means?
No.
No.
I don't know either.
Anybody else have questions?
Well, I would like to at least state this. I don't know what that expense is for.
Yep.
But it's a nominal compared to the total budget, but it's also more than the difference between the income and the expenses.
Yeah.
So if we could nail down exactly what that is, you're talking about a difference of $546 between expenses and income, and that's pretty tight.
It is very tight.
I can complain about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
So maybe we can get some clarification on it? I mean, it's clear that they've done a lot of work, and I appreciate that, but, you know, we, we need to know what that line is about.
We've also closed this out with the Heritage Commission.
Yeah, okay.
So we have filed that, although, so we're all done with our involvement with the budget.
Okay. Okay, any other old business? All right, new business, department head credit cards?
Yes. This one's me, too.
Okay.
I think we came to the point in time where we need to get credit cards for the departments. A lot of the department's staff are using their personal cards to, you know, do expenses for the town, and then having to submit for reimbursement.
Right.
I don't feel as though they should have to do that.
Right.
I mean, I think we're at the point where each department should have a credit card in emergency. There's been comments to me from some departments that they can get items at a lower cost online. They have to do it with, but it's difficult for them because they don't have the card, you know.
Well, expenses still have to be approved in the usual way.
Yep.
And as far as I can understand, a credit card would have you have greater transparency, because you'd have all the expenses and payments all in one place. And, and I know that for Water and Sewer, we've used our personal credit card, and it's just kind of a nuisance to get reimbursed.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's harder to keep track of, so I'm certainly supportive of it. Any other comments?
Go ahead, Lee.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, did we raise, what is it now that we, they need permission to get from the board?
$1,500.
Then the total credit card is only $750.
Okay, so at our department head meeting, this got brought up.
Yeah.
It seems kind of minimal.
Well, $750, apparently, that, that's what we have in policy, is $750.
Okay.
But I was told before my arrival, the board gave, raised that to $1,500.
We did.
Uh, but we couldn't find it in the minutes.
Okay.
Oh.
So, if you want to make it right now.
I'd like to make a motion to raise the expenditure limit for any incoming credit cards to $1,500.
Oh, second half.
$750 is not a lot of money.
No, I remember we raised it.
Yeah.
We did. I don't think it was ever a paperwork or by motion. I think it was exception.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to raise that to $1,500. All those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Um, does that also include other expenses besides the credit cards?
They already have $1,500. I think we changed that already.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
They are really pushing for $1,500 today.
Can you give an example, if I may? Earlier, you spoke about how you updated the one-ton to carry more snow. Well, perhaps there's another company out there besides Donovan and Spring that could give Craig a good deal on a spring pack.
Yeah.
You could have it here tomorrow, but it's going to come from Cape Cod or wherever.
Yeah.
You need a credit card. It saves you $200.
Right.
If you pay it off like I pay mine off every month, you're not incurring any more costs.
Right.
It's just a convenience.
Yeah. And they're all, all departments are very good about this when it gets close. They all inform me, and then I let you know.
Yeah.
And if so, we bring it all to the meeting, so.
Right. All right. All those in favor of approving the credit cards for the departments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Any other new business? Select board items?
Um, I have some stuff, but I didn't know if you wanted me to do any liaison.
Well, I haven't heard any select board items, so it looks like we're at liaison reports anyway.
Um, I have a Heritage, a Heritage meeting report.
Okay.
Katie Maher set up a Facebook page and a Shutterfly account to handle our home photo project, which we're trying, what we're trying to do is like, in the olden days, they used to take pictures of the families in front of their homes and keep them as a record. And what we're trying to do is to do the same thing, and get as many families as we can to take pictures of their current homes with their families in front, if they, if they could.
Okay.
So, right now, we're discussing different ways to send it. You can do it by Facebook or Shutterfly or email. Our email address is ashlandheritagecommission@gmail. If anybody wants it, they can see me after, or they can get it from the town office.
Okay.
Swamstock, Katie's talk with Principal Bartlett, who's talked to our art teacher, Teresa Merrifield, and the school's interested in the project. We've set a date for June 9th is our first date, and June 23rd is a backup date. This is for a celebration to commemorate when Ashland broke off from Holderness. So we're trying to also organize the Holderness School to be involved with our school and have events going on down at the beach. It would be down at the beach, and it wouldn't interfere with our fourth or with our 150th celebrations. On March the 1st, we're going to be having a PowerPoint presentation at 7:00 a.m. at St. Mark's, right, at St. Mark's. On, we used David's talk on town hall history on the town hall, because as you might know, we have a warrant article about starting working on town hall. And as I can testify, I went on a tour yesterday with Susan and Katie Maher. We're all in the Heritage Commission. And we toured town hall along with Tony, and, and I had never seen the basement before. It has a new water heater in it, because we had a frozen pipe that burst a little while ago. And the third floor, I don't know why I've never been on the third floor, but.
To the coolest.
Where our records are all thrown on shelves, which we discussed, having some volunteers get together and organize all those books at some point, we hope, maybe this spring. But all the original, the woodwork and everything, there's a huge arch ceiling up there, which you can't tell from outside, but it could be beautiful. And it's just, you know, the carpet's messed up, the police department, don't even want to talk about it. You know, I don't, can't see us getting a new one in the near future, but, you know, that would be nice. However, you know, we came to the conclusion that, you know, it's our 150th celebration, and we basically have not done anything to preserve that building on the interior or the exterior in basically 150 years, besides put some plastic stuff, it's called something, on the outside of the windows. But then you can't open the windows.
Yeah.
So our air quality is diminished.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just sad, and I urge people to vote, but also to please come out March 1st and see the presentation, because it will give you close-up views of all the, the cracks, the ceilings, the, you know.
Yeah.
Everything inside and outside.
Can you repeat where the, I thought you said 7:00 a.m.
I mean, p.m.
7:00 p.m.
No, because I, I could have made it at 7:00 a.m.
Yeah, I was like, huh, Lee?
I meant 7:00 p.m.
And where is it again?
St. Mark's.
Yeah, St. Mark's.
Okay.
Okay.
I asked Charlie about, I've noticed some people, I don't know if anyone else has noticed, people crossing the street in front of the Common Man and the church without being in the crosswalks. I know because I almost hit some people, not really, but, but I noticed people are walking without the crosswalk in front of the Common Man restaurant, which can be problematic. And I know it can't be done now, but I asked Charlie, is it a state or is it our responsibility?
I would say it's state responsibility, but we maintain it.
Yeah.
One of the things that's in the, in the TAP grant.
We repaint it.
Yeah. One of the things that's in the TAP grant that the engineers have spoken to are those crosswalks. And one thing they want to do is to put in those crosswalk that light up.
Flashing beacons.
Yeah, the flashing beacons. And I know, I just went to Ashland, Massachusetts, and they had those, and it was, you can't miss them.
Yeah.
And then, they're not ugly. It's not like it's going to be, you know, a sore spot, but it will, those crosswalks are dangerous. And when you're not walking in them, they're even more dangerous.
We'll have to make sure in the design phase that those are definitely there.
Absolutely.
I mean, for everybody locally who's not familiar with Ashland, Massachusetts, they have the ideal setup, the exact setup in Holderness. When you go to the fieldhouse, and you have the flashing lights, you're approaching, if there's someone standing in the crosswalk, it'll signal you that there's someone standing there.
Yeah, you can't miss it.
So hopefully, we'll get those addressed, but it's not going to happen tomorrow, so we need to make sure that we can.
No, I thought I'd notice that people can be careful, careful, that we can be careful on Main Street.
Yeah, for sure.
For people. We don't have a PRLAC meeting this month. We won't have one until March. That's Penny River Local Advisory Committee that I'm on. And the last thing that I, that I want to mention is, I called Charlie and asked him if he would invite the schools, our school's principal, Shannon Bartlett, to come and speak tonight about the school security that's in place in light of what happened last week in Florida. And she informed us that the superintendent will be coming to the next school board meeting, which is March 6th. Is that at 7:00, David? At 7:00. And he will be, he will be reviewing that, and I'm going to go to hear the report, and I hope parents, I hope parents will go to hear the report. And I'm sure you can read about it, that David will be writing about it. One thing, I talked with the police chief yesterday, and maybe he can explain this a little better than I can, but something that sounded a little problematic to me. Well, he explained that over the last five years, procedure has changed since the police department having to wait to, you know, to be called to come in. They can just automat, they automatically come in instead of waiting for a call. But the prob, the problem is they have to wait to punch in a code on the front door to get in, whereas some districts, like District 48, I believe, have alarms on their watch bobs. Am I explaining this correct?
I can explain it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all have FOBS to get into the schools, all the police officers.
Yeah.
SAU 48, a bunch of the chiefs and I, we went around to all the schools two years ago, I think it was. And SAU 48 has their FOBS program, so every school in SAU 48 is in that one FOB that they have. So if there's an active shooter or it's an incident going on at the school, police department will show up, beep, they go right in. Ashland's a little bit different. I've been working with the school. We have a pass code that we have to put in. Most dangerous time for a police officer when he approaches that door is when he takes his eyes off any potential threats. So when I bend down to beep, and then I take my eyes off to punch in a key code, that is the most dangerous time for the police officer before he enters that building. We are trying to work with the school to be able to just beep and come through the door. I will tell you that if we come here for some type of active shooter incident or whatever, the first guy, he is going to come right in. He's not going to wait around for backup to come. The protocol now is to just go in and confront the threat. Just keep in mind that most active shooter issues at schools are over within about three minutes. So it's a good chance the whole thing's going to be over by the time we actually get here, but there will be everybody coming. So, the key FOB was the thing that I was discussing with the school and trying to get it the same as SAU 48, because all of the surrounding police departments have FOBS for all those other schools. Holderness has the FOB that's programmed for Camden, Ruppme, Plymouth, that one FOB holds all those pass codes in it. So every police officer in those towns have a key FOB that goes to every one of the schools in SAU 48. So when they get there, they don't have to worry about how they're going to get in, where they're supposed to go. They can just beep themselves right through the door. So, that's what we're trying to work on here with what's been set up for Ashland.
Okay.
Ashland's a little unique, because we're in two SAUs. We're in SAU 48 for the high school, SAU 2 for, for the elementary school.
Yeah.
I will say that the security here at the Ashland Elementary School is very good.
Yeah.
Okay? So, I think, with that being said, they, you know, they have a good handle on it, but, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah. Again, I, I'm just heartbroken that we have to even talk about this. It's just very sad.
No, it's crazy.
It is crazy. But we, we need to make sure that our kids are safe, so. But we, we need to make sure that our kids are safe, so I, thank you for the update, Tony, and keep us posted.
And the parents all received a letter this week too, um, describing exactly all the security measures that are in place, is, you may not know, our doors are locked, so you can't just go in the door if you're coming to pick somebody up.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
What time was that meeting?
At 7:00.
7:00 on March 6th?
Yes.
March 1st?
No, March 6th.
The school board meeting, okay. Good, thank you. Anything else, Lee?
Oh, let me see here.
You've got all kinds of notes, so.
Um, no, I think, I think that was everything.
Okay. Harold, Casey?
Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Uh, Ashland Conservation Commission held our regularly scheduled meeting on the 4th Wednesday of January. Um, we discussed areas of interest of preservation and conservation within the town of Ashland. Uh, we're interested in studying what information is available that we can relay on to the townspeople as far as conservation and the environment that we live in. Uh, we also discussed areas that may translate into projects for both volunteers and/or perhaps an Eagle Scout to engage. We also voted to expend funds to design and produce a boat, a poster display for this previous February 3rd town meeting, um, that went off with quite a bit of applause. Um, we're looking to get some more members. We have one of our commissioners, uh, which is up in April for his appointment, which will put us at two commissioners. Um, we need a quorum of three to operate, so if there's anyone out there in TV land that has an interest in the environment or conservation or has been on the Conservation Commission or perhaps worked in that field in the past, we could really use you on the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Harold. Anything else? Casey?
Uh, Water and Sewer. I, uh, just reiterate a couple of things, the, they met with Nobis and, uh, a solar company to see the feasibility for converting to solar in the future.
Nice.
So they're gonna keep looking into that. And then they had an energy on it where they're maybe being able to save some energy there as well.
Okay.
And February 28th at 6:30, there's a informational session on, uh, warrant articles for Water and Sewer. I don't know where that is, I forgot to write it down.
Uh, it's at the fire station.
All right, the fire station, at 6:30 on February 28th, so.
I think it's gonna be on PBTV, right?
Yes, they're gonna film that as well.
Perfect, well, it'll also be there.
Okay. Thank you, Casey.
Will they also be discussing that metering at that meeting? 'Cause I know that's one of the requirements for purchasing solar.
It is, it is.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they're gonna be discussing the solar, right now they're still doing feasibility studies, so we're not quite there yet.
I guess, is it an in-house study for only their source and not to sell it outright at this time?
They gotta, they gotta, I think they gotta find out what their demands are, if, if it's enough for, for them to put in solar just for them or if they're gonna look at the whole town. I mean, there's a lot of questions that they need answered before they, they do it. Metering is clearly, uh, an important question, right?
Remains to sell the electricity, but on.
It, it would be nice.
Beginning.
Yes.
1,975 people, we should be able to supply our own electricity.
It would be nice, Harold, I totally agree.
Yeah, all they had was the, uh, business card from the guys, they were gonna get back in touch with them.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Um, as I mentioned, the, their next Tuesday, a week from tonight, there is an Economic Development meeting. We had to cancel the one that was for tonight because we had to reschedule our select board meeting for tonight. So it will be next Tuesday at the fire station at 6:30. Um, we were, will be discussing, among other things, the, um, Brownfield's report and next steps, and then also talking about setting up a meeting with the select board.
Nice. Do you think this meeting will be set up prior to or after Election Day? As far as scheduling, do we know that far out yet?
I, I don't. Um, I mean, this, it really doesn't have anything to do with the election at this time.
No, but I'm just saying if we're sitting, if we have a group meeting.
Yeah.
And there are parties that are either going to be involved and are no longer going to be involved, do you wanna reiterate the same information points?
Right, 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 right. Yeah. I think it'll be something other than, well, I don't know, I'll, I'll let you know next week, after we, we talk about it, so.